The Passaic County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting. As you can tell, I'm not John Bartlett. I'm filling in for him today. But, and please bear with me, I haven't sat in this seat in a few years or so. I, uh, I'm probably a little rusty. But we have a great night ahead of us because we're going to celebrate Irish Heritage Month. And thank you to our Commissioner Duffy for always doing this. I'd like to ask Lou for a roll call, please.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Gallo. James. Lapour. Deputy Director Lazera.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Okay, um, and now an announcement of the open public meetings law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including annual notice, adopted reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Thank you. Commissioner Duffy?
Why don't you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason, justice for all.
In a moment of silence for those who have passed. And say counting the world actually. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic.
That thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen. Dismiss the colors.
Thank you. That was great. Yes, of course. You're the boss. You call me when you want me to come down there.
Especially we, uh, our priest is MIS.
Oh, hold on. Terry?
Yes.
As I said, I was a little rusty, but we have to, uh, we can go into it. Okay, never mind.
What do you want to do?
Go ahead. No, I missed something, but we'll go back to it.
Oh, I'll go back.
No, you're fine.
All right, so we lost our Father Ryan. I don't know where he is. Hopefully, he's drunk in some tavern down at First and River Street. Uh, it'll be St. Patty's Day coming up. But, um, this is, it's always an honor and it's a privilege to be able to come and celebrate, you know, all ethnics, ethnicities throughout the county. And, uh, one happens to be St. Patty's Day, which I enjoy so much. We do have two outstanding recipients, uh, and we have Tom Kelly and we have Catherine McCann, um, and our director is going to read Kelly.
Yes. Should I do it now?
Yeah. So Father Ryan, I don't know where he is. If you want, we could do something religious if you want. We could take up a collection. What do you think? What do you think? For the children, for the children. Come on up here, Tom.
I finally get to give something to you. So Tom and I go back pretty far. We've worked together, um, on a lot of initiatives and we hopefully will continue to work together moving forward. But Tom is one of the best men I have ever met. He's got a heart of gold. He does so much for the community. I don't have to read this to tell you that he helps everybody. And so, uh, obviously, the Passaic County Central Labor Council through you and Patrick, you guys do so much for the communities around here. It's, um, it's just amazing. So I'm really happy that I can read this proclamation for Tom because he is a good friend. Whereas in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Irish Americans over the years, the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to recognize Tom Kelly during its Irish-American heritage celebration. Oh, and by the way, my great-grandmother is a Quinn from Ireland.
See, I knew there was something I liked about you.
Josie, Josie Quinn.
I'll see. We want a tab in Duffy's under that name. That's the corner of First and River Street. We open all week.
Whereas Tom Kelly's grandparents immigrated from Ireland to New York City in the late 19th, early 20th centuries, where they raised 11 children. The second youngest of those children was James P. Kelly, who married Mary Denegan in 1949. Together, they had eight children, and Tom was the youngest. Whereas Tom Kelly currently resides in Emerson with his wife Anne Marie of 31 years and together raised their three children. Tom, who is a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Union, IBEW Local 827, Mary, who is a teacher in Hillsdale, New Jersey, and Brendan, who is a twice-deployed Marine Corps veteran, who is currently attending Felician College's nursing program full-time. And whereas Tom Kelly coached baseball, football, softball, wrestling, basketball, and soccer from 2001 to 2013, and served as an officer for several recreation boards during those years. Whereas Tom Kelly became president of the Emerson Parents for Athletes Program, where he raised over $150,000 in three years completing many projects and was elected into the Emerson Athletic Hall of Fame in 2016. And whereas Tom Kelly has been a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Union since January 1988 and has held many positions over the time, including steward, chief steward, and business agent. Whereas Tom Kelly joined the Passaic County Central Labor Council in 2016 and rose from delegate to president in 2021 and is currently the president of the Telephone and Communications Emerald Society. Whereas Tom Kelly was awarded the Helping Our Heroes Award for food bank collections organized for families of deployed military personnel for Local 827 Unit 1, awarded, awarded the Lifesaver Award for efforts above and beyond by New York, New Jersey Blood Services for blood drives organized for Local 827 Unit 1, awarded the Veteran of Verizon Volunteers' Award and associated grant for seven consecutive years, recipient of the Giblin Association Community Service Award in 2022, and recipient of the Wimberley Foundation Award in 2023. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Tom Kelly for the significant contributions he has made to the County of Passaic and to the community. Be it further proclaimed that the board congratulates Tom Kelly for being named the 2024 Irishman of the Year for the County of Passaic. Congratulations. They didn't talk about your toy drive. Look at that. Tom also organizes a toy drive here in Patterson every year and does a lot of work with the veterans' homes also, a lot. So Tom, this may talk a little bit about what Tom does, but Tom does a heck of a lot more that's even in this proclamation.
And listen, Tom, and I say this all the time, I do none of that alone. I do none of that alone. I do it as a group. If I didn't have the people with me, my friends, the Labor Council isn't my friend, they're my family. My family, um, none of this would be possible. And hey, this started out, as Sandy said, with four immigrants that came here over 100 years ago with the dream. And their dream wasn't about themselves, their dream was about their future. My in-laws immigrated from Ireland in the 50s. Dream wasn't for themselves, it was for their future, like all immigrants. They're dreaming about the future. I'm the future, so I'm just the lucky product and recipient of what people were willing to do to come here a long time ago to make my life better. So, you know, we give back, like I said, I do none of this alone. I do it conjunctionally. I'd like to thank all the commissioners, everybody, um, like I said, I do none of it alone. It's a community effort, it's a communal effort, and, uh, I'm, I'm humbled by it.
Great job.
Yeah, great job.
Now, stay tuned when you get your picture.
You may.
Got him in here? Bring him up. Come on, Kelly, bring him up.
Are these your sons?
These are my sons. That's Brendan and that's Thomas. He's a pollution. You guys are sure, right? If I get hurt, are you guys insured? You, go ahead. Should I get? Get next to the biggest guy here. Oh, three. I think I heard that.
All right. Can you make this lettering any smaller? I mean, come on, really? All right, well, this is my honor to, uh, to have Kathleen McCann step up, who I've known her for a long time, and she's involved with, I'll read it. Whereas in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Irish Americans over the years, Passaic County Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to recognize Kathleen McCann during an, its Irish-American heritage celebration. Whereas Kathleen McCann was born in Wayne, New Jersey, and graduated from DePaul High School in 1973. And whereas Kathleen McCann began working at her parents' tavern, the Hi Ho Club, in Wayne, New Jersey, as a bartender waitress. Whereas Kathleen McCann pursued a career in the traveling industry and became the director of marketing for Lib Go Travel, Northeast Sales Manager for Couples Resorts in Jamaica, and Northeast Sales Manager for Continental Airlines Vacations. Whereas Kathleen McCann's mother, Gertrude Wilshire, was a huge influence in her life and was one of the original members of the Women of Irish Heritage, which was founded in 1973. Kathleen became a member early on and has held many positions throughout the years, including present, president, and currently serves as a trustee. Whereas Kathleen McCann has been honored as Woman of the Year by the Women's of Irish Heritage in 2014, McGovern Association in Newark, New Jersey in 2016, and has given the opportunity to celebrate St. Patrick's Day and her Irish heritage by marching in parades throughout New Jersey, New York, Clark, Charleston, South Carolina, Savannah, Georgia, Navan, and Donegal in Ireland. Whereas Kathleen McCann in 19, I'm sorry, 1986, met the lover of her life, Brendan McCann, at the New Jersey Irish Festival at the Garden State Arts Center, where they were both working on festival committees. They married in 1994 and are proud parents of the son Terry McCann, who has often been referred to as the product of the Irish festival. This is my favorite part, reminds me of the Wizard of Oz. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Kathleen McCann for the significant contributions she has made to the County of Passaic and to the community. And be it further proclaimed that this board congratulates Kathleen McCann for being named 2024 Irish Woman of the Year. Congratulations.
That's beautiful. I just want to thank you all so much. Thank you all for coming.
You have three minutes.
I have three minutes. I'll do it in two. I want to thank Terry, all the commissioners, my husband Brendan. Just, this is an honor. I'm very happy to be here. I agree that you don't do anything alone, you know? I want to thank the Academy for giving the first Irish-born actor an Oscar the other night, Killian Murphy. We're on a roll. Look out, can't, no stopping us. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
That might be the same outfit.
I know what you mean.
And that concludes Director Irish.
Yes, and did you invite everybody to take soda bread before they go?
Yes, please. Um, go ahead. We have soda bread, so everyone grab one on the way out. Enjoy it tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
So, on the, on the commissioners.
Thank you.
Personally, I would have had shots of whiskey, but, uh, my wife's here, I gotta be careful. I didn't like all this.
So I have to backtrack for a minute. And, uh, Lou, we need an approval of the minutes from February 27th, 2024.
So moved.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazera.
Yes. Matt, do you have any? I'd like to recognize our county clerk, Danielle Ireland Imhoff, who just joined us today. Okay, do you have anything?
I think we're proclamations.
Can I have an approval of the proclamations?
Make that.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazera.
Yes. Okay.
No, Commissioner Duffy already ably handled our Irish Heritage Month already. Thank you.
Quite ably. I think next year, though, you should bring corned beef and cabbage to go with the soda bread. Yeah.
I know of, there's a place on Corner of First and River Street.
Oh, no kidding?
Entertainment every night. That's the corner of First and River Street, Duffy's Tavern. Did I mention that?
I have to say, it is very good corned beef and cabbage. I've had it.
I cooked it myself.
Tara? Did you hear that? Okay, um, we're done with the administrator's report, so we're going to move on to county commissioner reports. And seeing that Director John Bartlett isn't here, it's due to, um, a family medical, um, reason, and he had to go to Pennsylvania, so he would have loved to be here, but, you know, family first, so he's not here. Uh, my commissioner report. So I guess my report is more of clarif, I'm looking for clarification, I guess. This, uh, today, there at 4:45, a press release was put on by my county commissioner, Nick Gallo, um, regarding project labor agreements for the Passaic County Jail. And I read it with a lot of, um, questions, I guess. And one of the ones that sticks out mostly in my mind is that it says that the board passed a resolution allowing all county projects over $5 million to be performed under a PLA. And to my knowledge, that resolution has never been passed, and I was just wondering if you could share with us where you got that information from.
Um, I would have to look back into my records for that. I don't have that at the moment.
Okay, because, you know, to my knowledge, it was never a resolution passed. That's why I'm just asking, just for clarification. And my other question was, actually a question of clarification about the county, will the county be utilizing a PLA on any planned capital public works projects? What is the justification for the difference in procurement practices? And I am probably procurement, thank God we have Sherry, is a little bit of a mystery to me because I'm, and I'm not quite sure what that, what you're asking in that question, I guess.
How do we go about not using that PLA?
So the justification for the difference in procurement practices, I'm not sure what's being compared.
Comparison to other projects that we have.
Okay. Still not clear to me, but that's okay. Um, I, I just want to say that moving forward, we have used PLAs in the past, specifically for Preckness Healthcare Center and our Nike base. Moving forward, we will be using PLAs for the construction of veteran housing in Pompton Lakes and the reconstruction of the area where the jail is being demolished. So the guidelines that we follow for PLAs, it's all legal. Everything we're doing is legal. And I, I have a lot of questions about it, and I'm sure you guys do too, which I will leave up to our county administrator, Matt, uh, who will answer the questions as we move along. I just found that this article having not been, I guess these questions not coming to our county administrator before they were published online was kind of out of the norm for us because Matt is always ready, willing, and able to answer anybody's questions. So I, I do find this press release a little disconcerting. That's all I have. Next. Commissioner Cruz.
Uh, I don't have anything tonight, Commissioner.
Duffy?
I just, Commissioner Duffy, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I just, I'm happy to hear that we're working on Camp Hope, the pool area. We have a new company taking over that, because we've had some problems in the past. We're gearing up for a great summer up at Camp Hope, and that's about it.
Commissioner Gallo?
Yes, actually, um, with that three points, uh, $3.375 million, is that, are we going to have any, um, change orders in that, this project to not exceed that $3.375 million?
Commissioner, none of us can give you a firm question on whether we have change orders or not. My experience is every project I've worked on here the last 10 years, there's been some change order because you just can't predict everything in the field. So I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you one way or the other whether there can be a change order on the project.
And also, do we have a deadline on this project, the start and the finish date?
There is a term of contract. Jonathan, do you know offhand?
Because hopefully it's not like the golf course because that's overwhelming, the project. I believe they passed a deadline.
What project are you talking about?
Uh, the bathrooms at the golf course.
The bathrooms, yeah. We've had some issues with the contractor at the golf course, but yeah, that project is moving and should be done, you know, we're hoping before the season kicks off.
As long as this project is well, gets on its way and gets done properly, that's all I'm concerned with. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner James. Commissioner Lapour?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Director. First off, there's 16 resolutions that the, my committee produced for my colleagues' review and hopefully support. And I also wanted to acknowledge being that you're, you're a very quiet person. I want to acknowledge the hard work that you put into the, uh, the wall, Vietnam Veterans Wall. We had our first meeting with the veterans, um, last week to say that they were stunned. at the magnitude of the wall and the commitment that these, my colleagues here on the board have towards creating this wall, building this wall, which is roughly about 80% of the size of the wall in Washington. This isn't a bunch of plaques hanging around. This is a serious, serious constructed building, or wall, I should say. And it's going to be, it's going to be a phenomenal addition to our park system. And I believe, based on veterans' comments, that they're excited, they can't wait for May, the grand opening. And I just want to say, you've been on, working on this for a number of years now. It's, it's close to your heart and in the home stretch here. And I just want to congratulate you for all the work that you've done.
Thank you. We have a projected date for the dedication of, and I'm just gonna tell you in one second.
I believe it's the 18th.
Saturday, May 18th. Yeah, I knew I had it in my calendar. Yeah, Saturday, May 18th. It's gonna be a big deal, and I think we can't think of any way to better recognize what our servicemen and women have done for us and to memorialize them in this, with this wall going up. And every name is going to be on it. We have 83 Passay County residents that we lost in the war. They will be recognized specifically. It's, it is, this project, I, I don't even have the words, it's so close to my heart. And we started it before the pandemic, it's, that's what held it up. You know, we had a lot of, you know, supply chain issues and all that kind of stuff. But if you can join us, we would love to have you there on Saturday, May 18th.
If I may, Director, I just want to reemphasize what Commissioner Lapour said, talking about the size of the wall at 80% of what's in Washington. This, this wall is going to be only one of its kind outside of the wall in Washington. So we're making national attention with this, so we want as many people there as possible to celebrate with us this. There's gonna be hundreds and thousands of people. I think 20, over 20,000 people visited the transported wall, like the moving wall up in Garrett Mountain. So now we'll have something stationary for these thousands of people to visit. And I'm just truly looking forward to it, I don't think we can do enough for our veterans. So I'm proud to be a part of this project, along with my colleagues as well.
Thank you. Okay. Communications, none. Okay, I'd like a motion to open the public portion of this meeting.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes. Anyone who comes up, you will have three minutes if, to speak. There's lights on the podium, so when you see it turning yellow, that means it's time to wrap things up because the three minutes will be up. And when you come up, please state your name and address. So I invite the public, anyone from the public who'd like to come up, please feel free to come on up.
Good evening. Dr. Alma Morel, 61, 8th Ave Hawthorne, resident. My purpose for coming to speak with you is to request that you reconsider the budget appropriation for the county vocational school district. The proposed 24-25 budget has allocated $7,44,594. It is my humble opinion that allocation is not appropriate, and I believe the county is underfunding the vocational school. For those who may not know, funding county vocational schools in New Jersey is a shared responsibility between the state, the local counties, and the local school districts. The 21 county vocational and technical schools are governed by legislation that requires the students' home districts to fund the tuition and transportation to send them. I want to share information of how the county vocational school is funded and the effects this has had on many school districts throughout our county. Unfortunately, a variety of factors have led to increased costs to local school districts. Several key factors contribute to the increased costs. One, state aid for district varies, and only recently has there been increased funding for some Passay County districts, but not all. And in fact, some districts are receiving less state aid. Two, another contributing factor includes the limitations on district budget increases imposed by tax levy caps. The 2% cap that only affects school districts as the county vocational does not have a tax levy, therefore no 2% cap on its budget. Three, an increase in the number of students enrolled in the school. And the last contributing factor, which I believe is why I'm here tonight to stress to you, is the stagnant contributions from the Passay County towards vocational education. Here is the story of what has changed and what has not changed. Here is what has changed. In 2006, the county vocational had a student enrollment of 2,517 students. Last school year enrollment was 4,393, a 57.3% increased enrollment. It is the largest county vocational school in the state. Keep in mind that there is an expected expansion that would add another 800 students over the next four years, bringing the total enrollment in 2026, 2027 to approximately 5,200 students. Clearly, enrollment has changed exponentially. Do you know what not, do you know what has not changed in the last 18 years? Passay County's appropriation. In 2006, Passay County appropriated $6,460,000. In 2012, the county appropriated $7,44,585. So, for the last 10 years, the county has appropriated the same amount to the county vocational school, regardless of the increased enrollment, increased county vocational student tuition rates, and we can all agree, inflation, which has raised costs across the board. Allow me to remind you that the proposed budget has appropriated $7,44,594. That is a $9 increase. I ask the commissioners and the public, does that make sense? To understand the inequity in the current funding formula for the county vocational schools, which I explain comes from three buckets of money: state aid, local school districts, and the county contribution. Passay County Vocational derives the most money from local districts when compared to other county vocational schools, while its state aid has continued to increase. And yet, the lower and stagnant county contribution, coupled with higher tuition, puts the onus on local taxpayers to pay for their community students as opposed to being evenly distributed across the county.
Excuse me, but your three minutes is up. The lights aren't working.
May I end with the conclusion, if I may? It's three sentences. The allocation of $7 million toward the county vocational school that is unlike any other in the state and growing reflects the county administration and commissioners, who have not contributed their fair share despite increased enrollment, continued expansion, and inflation. I urge you to consider revising the proposed budget to reflect a much greater financial commitment to the county vocational.
Thank you.
Anybody seen anyone at the podium? I moved to close the public portion. Anybody wanna come up?
Jamie Machaga, One Tower Center, East Brunswick, New Jersey. I work for the Laborers International Union of North America. I currently represent 25,000 members here in the eastern region. More so, 563 taxpaying members here in Passay County who are members of Wyona, and also 150 families who are taxpaying families who live here in Patterson. Today, I'm here, standing with Labor's Local 3, to ask the commission not to approve this resolution to award a contract for 11 Marshall Street redevelopment project. I worked in the construction industry for over 25 years. And me, I can see that there's something wrong with this bid. The commission passed a $7 million bond ordinance back in December for the abatement and demolition of this project. So that tells me that this project should run somewhere between $5 to $5.5 million, not 3.3, 3.6, or anything under $5 million. That should automatically raise red flags to all the commissioners on the board. This project includes asbestos abatement, which Caravela demolition, who's the apparent low bidder, is not licensed to do, nor did he disclose the abatement company that he's going to use. So this raises questions about how the demolition work is gonna be done in the asbestos. We have places like Eva's Village, just up the block, a church across the street, not to mention all the residential homes that are in the area. Now, if this thing is done wrong, your residents will be affected by asbestos or silica that would go in the air if the demolition is done wrong. Let's talk about the local hire component on this project. There isn't one. You all chose not to implement a local hire. Patterson residents should have had the first opportunity to work on this job. You all had the opportunity to do that by implementing a PLA, which requires local hire. But nobody did that. I asked the board not to approve this resolution and rebid this project. To guarantee the public's safety, the new bid should require the disclosure of the licensed abatement contract that's gonna perform the work. So that's right, everyone's on the up and up, transparency, not only to us but to all the public. So all the bids tonight should be rejected, all, not just the apparent low bidder. And the commission should put the project out to rebid, and it should be more specific in the specifications of the bid as to the work that is going to take place. This bid was very confusing when you look at it. I don't feel the bid was all fully transparent. If you put more specific things into the bid, the contractors know how to bid a project properly, and that will avoid change orders, cost overruns, which we all know the county's had those issues in the past with some of these projects. So today, I stand here alone with Laborers Local 3, ask you, turn down this resolution, go back to the table, redo the specs, and rebid the project properly. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Herman Starr, 20566 McKinley Street, Passay, New Jersey. 35-year member of Labor Local 3. All was here before. All we ask you is to be fair. What my man says, we stand behind. We ready to work for you guys, but for, but a fair wage. That's all we ask for. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Before anything, I would like to thank the privilege from my Lord Jesus Christ for giving me this privilege. My name is Alan Paredes. I live in 471 Highland Avenue. My father also resides there. I'm really supporting in, in the commission, if you vote on the award to Marshall Street project tonight. I know a lot of folks in the area who are looking for work and struggling to make ends meet. I know their concerns for the bid that is too low, and I think also those concerns are valid. I'm a trained asbestos worker, and I understand the damages of asbestos remediation and asbestos, and demolition. And I don't want to seek cutting corners. And my father's also trained. And he, throughout my life, he was able to give me a fair dedication, medical benefits, and, and I was able to appreciate that. So all we're asking for is to consider us. And how my partner said before, we're willing to work for you guys for fair wages.
Caesar Gammio, Glen Rock, New Jersey. I'm a, good afternoon Commissioners. I represent, I'm a business representative for Local 825 Operating Engineers. We represent 8,000 members throughout the state. Many of them are from Passay County. I'm asking you to postpone or deny this award for Marshall Street. I don't understand why you can't have a PLA on this job. You don't need an ordinance or anything else. The state law says anything over $5 million, you can apply it. The, we, Labor, 825 and Labor supports this council all the time. We're asking you to help the working men and women of our union to get this job. We do a better job, safety, we accomplish things on time, or if not earlier, why are we giving it out to anybody like they said the bid was very low? It helps our local residents, it helps the county, it helps our members. We do a great, we do a great job. And if you are gonna award it, or think about awarding it, the second bidder is an MBE thing, and it was $3,000 difference. I'd rather have you throw it out and start all over and just say it's a project labor agreement, where you get quality, the quality work. And once again, we support you, we'd like to have your support, our, our back too. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Brian Jackson, 422 Kearney Street, Patterson, New Jersey. I'm president of Passay County Building and Construction Trades Council, and also Business Manager, Financial Secretary, Treasurer of Commissary Roofers, Loebton, in Patterson, New Jersey. Good evening tonight. I'm here to support Local 3 Laborers and Operators 825. With all due respect, Commissioner Cassandra, you made a statement tonight that there, Mr. Jordan is ready and willing to take phone calls. With all due respect, I, I reached out to several of you guys on this panel about this project, and to this day, I haven't gotten an email, and I haven't gotten a phone call back. With all due respect, every time I call here, Mr. Jordan, you're in the meeting. I can say that, that it's not true. You're a very busy man, you, all you guys are busy. But tonight, we are here in support of Local 3 and 825 to, for you guys to reconsider this bid. It is very extremely low. I know we're all in the business to make money and save money, but this is about safety and the well-being of the residents of the city. And I'm also licensed asbestos removal through my trade, and it is extensive work. And I've walked the county jail to see the bidding process on it. And $3.6 million is not gonna get it done. And that is about all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat Keller. I'm the business agent of Plumbers Local 24. My counterpart, Angela Scordo, covers Passay County as also. I'm here to speak on, you commissioners here. You know, we talk about elections. All these members and agents here get elected every three years. It's all about responsibility. It's all about what we put people to work, about apprentice programs, getting everything else. Harpeters and the laborers are part of the building trades and everybody else here today. They're fighting for it. Like I said, this is easy. Project labor agreement, responsible contractor language under the threshold. This guy is cheating, the conversation. Is there local hires on that project? That's a good question. Sandy, could you look into that? Because we're gonna probably open that and go after it, because the conversation of a delta of $3 or $4 million, what I just found out tonight, it's impossible. Project could be done with organized labor here, the, the operators, the laborers, and stuff like that, men. We talk about, you all talk about us getting people into the programs. Can you help this person? I'm a 40-year member of the UA. I started my first year apprenticeship in 1982 in Jersey City. After that, I left with the contractor in Patterson. It was a small contractor, I did all the silk mills, warehouses, and everything. I did, I graduated my eighth, sixth year at a, at a journeyman and stuff like that, and I did continue to do work here. And the conversation, we have these members here tonight that want to work, they want to feed their family. But when we get a contractor from out of the area, or the contractor that doesn't the right, do the right thing, who do they come to? They come to the business agents. So attorneys and everything else, is PLAs, responsible contractor language. You should, because if this guy flops, who's on the hook? You are. So let's, you always ask us for help, right? Let's all be kidding here, we're all elections, right? We put a lot of people on the street. Now we need your help. Take care of these guys right here tonight. Thank you.
How hard would it be to pull this back and take another look?
How hard would it be to pull this back and take another look at it? I mean, they have valid questions out here. I don't, you know, I don't have any answer to some of their questions. Was this place, does this company have a history with us at all?
We have to close the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'll be quiet. I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
I'll second it, Terry.
Sorry about that. Someday I'll get it right. So anyway, that's my questions. You know, they have some valid concerns, and we lean a lot on them. Tell me.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes, to close the public portion.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lapour.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Okay, questions still out there.
Yeah, Director, I'll jump in and answer some of these questions. We did do a, this board did do a seven million dollar bond ordinance. It wasn't a cost estimate or anything specific just to the demolition. It was for the demolition and other ancillary costs related to redeveloping the site. So that's one. We did get six bids for this project, four of them under five million, all within a similar ballpark, which leads myself, our county engineer, our retained architect, our environmental consultant, believe that these are good bids. Asbestos abatement is a highly regulated field. You have to be licensed by the state, by our community affairs. We did an asbestos removal job at Cordeau's Annex. Our environmental consultant signed off on all of the bid specifications, and will be overseeing the removal to ensure that it's done in compliance with all of DCA's extensive regulations. Anything else you want me to address, Commissioner?
Does this company have a history with?
Well, it's a, it's a low bid, Commissioners, so. They've been deemed qualified by our county engineer, by our retained architect, our environmental consultant, that they can complete the job.
And everyone's saying that it's a low bid, lowest bid that can't be done with this.
Well, yeah, that's how this, that's how this works.
Hold them to task if they come back and say it's two hundred million dollars.
We certainly will, yes. Did I address everything, Director? Is anything else?
No.
If I could just speak to, Dr., I missed your name, Dr. Morell. We, we have had a lot of conversations with the Passaic County Superintendent's Associations. I've talked to Paul a lot. I know it's frustrating for the school districts. I will say this board worked last year with them to reduce the tech tuition. I know you don't want to hear this, but this is a state funding issue. This board does contribute the statutorily required amount, but we're more than willing, myself and the Commissioners, to continue to have these conversations with our school districts about how the tech has, has impacted your local budgets. And if I could just speak to Mr. Jackson, too. If I didn't return your call, I apologize. Oscar and Rob can tell you that I've had a bunch of conversations with them. If I missed it, it was a misunderstanding, and I guess I'll give you my cellphone so you can call me.
With that, we'll move on to the, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. If anyone would like to pull anything off, please let us know now before we start the vote.
I would.
Okay.
L twenty-six, please.
Okay.
Is that that project you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll do the same thing. I'll pull that myself.
Okay. Yes, yes. I'm sorry, I should have. L twenty-six will be voted on separately. So we're going to look for a vote for L one through L twenty-five, and we're going to pull, pull L twenty-six for a separate vote. Can we have a, the poll mills? Oh, L twenty-seven to L thirty-six.
I'll make the motion for L one through twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Just a point of order, it's L one through L twenty-five, and L twenty-six through L thirty-six.
L twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven through L twenty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Okay. Okay, so, just to clarify, we're voting on L one through L twenty-five, and L twenty-seven through L thirty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Who's going to move that?
I'll move it.
Seconded by Lapour.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lapour. Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Okay. Now we're going to take a vote on L twenty-six.
Deputy Director. I'm a little concerned about the asbestos issue. The reason why I say that is we know that Hinslip Stadium, with all of its, you know, fanfare, has a real problem with asbestos. It wasn't done properly, and people who go there are exposed to asbestos. I don't want another thing where we're doing something where anybody's exposed to asbestos. I just, you know, I realize that you have experts that are watching it. You're, I'm hearing that it's not enough people to get it out the right way, and I just don't know if that's right. You're, you're with that, but I mean, that's what you do for a living. I, I trust that Matt's right, that we're getting people that know what they're looking at, but I'm really concerned about the aftermath. Everybody's, after it's down, what is it that we're looking at? We had a million-dollar lawsuit on a building that we didn't even do. It's the courthouse here, because there was asbestos, and one of the judges had mis, I think he had mis, you know, I'm not sure what he had, but he died from lung cancer, and the, the award was well over a million dollars. So, you know, we really have to be careful when it comes to these kinds of things, so.
Commissioner, I would just, if I could jump in, Director. Again, a DCA-licensed contractor will have to do this removal. We have an environmental consultant on board that's going to be managing and overseeing the removal from soup to nuts. And again, myself, the county engineer, and all of our consultants are confident in their ability to execute this project safely.
Is there a possibility to open up the public speaking again in response? Because we do have some answers to some of the questions.
We are not, we have a agenda.
We're to Robert's rules, you can do that if you are allowed to.
Yeah, we're really going to move on the motion to move L twenty-six.
Without answering and responding to specific questions, Commissioners, a very.
We've already had the public portion, and.
You are allowed to do it again according to Robert's rules. You can make special motions to open up the public portion again.
Thank you. One speaker.
To open the public portion, I'm sure Commissioner James will be around after the meeting if you need to talk to him. So.
So without answering his questions or his concerns on the safety, including that the fact that we have the same concerns in the safety of Hinslip, we have the same conversation with the city of Patterson prior to the award in that contract?
We're going to ask you to please speak to Commissioner James.
So you're going to allow, if you intend to pass this, were concerns are addressed directly? Then I urge the Commissioners to vote no on this so that more conversation can be had prior to awarding this contract.
Thank you.
Why you think they ain't taking the fiscal then? Asbestos.
We have a motion on the floor right now to vote on L twenty-six. We're going to proceed as we normally do. We've had our one public time to speak portion. I think that if those questions had been asked easy before, it would have been easy for you to address it. At this point, we, we're not going to open the public portion again. We're going to go into executive session, so if you'll give us a few minutes. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Robert's rule, we have to give a reason for executive session to ensure that you're going to executive session for proper reasons.
We're going in to discuss L twenty-six.
But what portion of what specifically you're going to discuss that should not be made public comment, should not be made public comments? You can't just go and discuss an issue unless there's an executive, a reason for an executive session.
We don't have, we don't have to disclose why we're going into executive session.
Well, then you better make sure you're not talking about issues that should be made in the public and not for executive session. There has to be a reason for that. See, no reason answering the Commissioners's questions is not the reason to go into executive session.
We could have a reason to discuss the pending contract award.
Okay, but it can't be discussions that, that should be made.
So you can't dictate what we discuss. We have a reason to discuss the pending award. That's why we're going into executive session.
Wait for your executive session minutes to make sure you get a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to take a vote. We need a second to go into executive session.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Lapour. Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
We'll be back.[1304.42]